Well, good morning, everyone. Thank you for getting up nice and early to join the Newport Beach Chamber and Wake Up Newport. We've got a great program this morning. I'm Alberto Zanabal, Senior Director of Community and Government Relations for UC Irvine. But before we get to the program, let's call up our illustrious leader, Steve Rozansky.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Alberto. We have our past Government Affairs Chair Rush Hill with us this morning. We've missed Rush. I told him this morning, I don't feel like I'm at the same meeting, you know, because he's not here, so thanks for showing up. Anyway, welcome to our, what is this, November edition of Wake Up Newport. I'm Steve Rozansky, President/CEO of the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce. We've got a great program for you this morning. Speaker is going to talk on a lot of very current issues. I'm, you know, excited to hear what she has to say about it. But before we get to that, we do have one speaker I want to invite up is Tyler back there, Tyler Parker. He's our sponsor with First Republic Bank, and Tyler's going to tell us about how interest rates are going to go under 1%, right Tyler?
If I had a crystal ball and if that were true. No, but thank you so much for having me here. We're thrilled to sponsor the event and continue to get to know the folks here in Newport Beach a little bit better. Just a very small bit about the bank. We are a full-service banking organization. We are a private bank located in Newport Beach. We've got an office down here in Corona del Mar. I'm at both locations, and we have a full service, a full service of product offerings. Everything from wealth management, personal lines of credit, rates are fantastic on those, as low as two and a quarter with relationship pricing, and everything else that you could look for in a bank. That's it. Thank you so much, Steve.
I'm working with them myself on a commercial loan that I need, so very good service over there. We, as always, we have a few dignitaries with us this morning, so I'll just mention that former Mayor Keith Curry is with us this morning, over back there. Our city manager is with us this morning, Grace LeYoung. Welcome, Grace. We have Howard Herzog from the Civil Service Board with us this morning. Howard, where are you? Thank you. And Pierce Swan, Irvine Ranch Water District Director. Also mention that we have, you know, it's Tuesday was Election Day, not here in California, but in other places, and so we're one year out from the election. We have people that are already announcing that they're going to run for City Council, so as I typically do here at Wake Up Newport for the next year, as they show up here, I'll be introducing them. So tonight, or this morning, God, I still feel like it was tonight. I had three events yesterday, I got three events today. Robin Grant, candidate for City Council, District Four. She's also my sister, as you probably all, if you've been here before, I always point that out. She just finished up several years on the Civil Service Board herself, so welcome. And as the other candidates announce themselves, hopefully they'll appear here and we can introduce them to you as well. I think that covers everybody, so I'm going to turn it back over to Alberto to introduce our speaker. I'll have a few closing comments at the end about upcoming events, and we've got a lot of them coming, including the Boat Parade, December 15th and 19th, so get ready for that. So Alberto, why don't you pick it up?
Thanks, Steve. We've got a great speaker this morning, ladies and gentlemen. We've got Newport Beach Councilwoman Joy Brenner, who's a 57-year resident and community leader and consensus builder here in Newport Beach. Her most recent professional experience was in fundraising at the University of California Irvine College of Medicine, where she focused on community outreach. After building a successful VIP program for UCI School of Medicine, she was recruited, we should get you back, she was recruited by Hoag Hospital Foundation to develop a similar program for their donors. Her last position at UCI, in one of which she is exceptionally proud, was in support of the Susan Samuieli Center for Integrative Medicine, which is a great program. All five of her grandchildren attend Newport Mesa Unified School District Schools, as did their parents. Ladies and gentlemen, join us in welcoming Joy Brenner.
So as I was readying this housing presentation from our Community Development Department last night, I realized that there are so many topics that I really need to get into. I was going to kid Steve, because I speak to the Corona del Mar Chamber of Commerce once a month, and it's even hard to keep them updated on everything that's going on monthly. So now I've been on council three years, and I'm going to try to nail it down and give you all the pertinent information. Of course, the most important is housing. Since I've been on council, the first year, they call it like drinking from a fire hose, because even though I'd been involved for almost 60 years in Newport Beach, you know a lot, but you don't know enough. You can never know enough when you get there. And so that first year, you are absorbing everything you possibly can, and it really takes a lot of, you know, you're coming from the community side, where you're used to speaking at the podium, to the council at the dais, and it's easy to have, you know, your perspective. It's easy to have what you understand and the position from which you're coming, but when you get to council, you have to understand every, well, you don't have to, but it's best if you understand everyone's perspective and try to see if there is some good information on both sides that you can incorporate into your final decisions. And so that first year was really intense. Then I was ready to have some balance in my life and start doing some other things, and the second year came, and we had the, we had the, first the helicopter crash with Kobe and all of our neighbors and friends that were on there. That was just heartbreaking for all of us, and then we had the pandemic. Well, what was really interesting about the pandemic was, at the very beginning, each of our City Council members recorded a little segment with Ed that played on Newport Beach TV, and we all ended with, "We're all in this together." Well, that lasted for about five minutes, and then everybody was at each other and, you know, complaining, and "You're not doing this right," and "You're not doing this right," and it became really a challenge. So we've had, and we try to listen there, because we understand that even if you're coming from a different perspective, you've got your fears and concerns, that they're important to you, and so we really do try to look at everybody's point of view and try to come up with the best solution that really works for all of us. But it's not easy. I have been telling people that, to me lately, it seems like politics is a game, and I feel like I'm reverberating. What am I doing here?
Yeah, you're going to have to unfortunately do it.
Okay. Can you hear me now? Okay. You know, we grow up in America especially, playing games, playing sports, you know, everybody's on a team, and what we have come to in the city of Newport Beach and politics in general is teams, not a unified effort to try to solve our problems. And that's been the biggest thing that I have really been struck by since I got elected, was that, you know, we just need to focus on our problems and solve the problems and get away from, I was telling Will the other day that I feel like it's a great experience for me to be on City Council, because it's sort of like, you know, in high school when the mean girls leave you out. And I've got five grandchildren, and three of them are girls, that have teenage girls, and had two daughters, and so I said, "I've experienced this five times in my life, when you've got daughters that are trying to deal with all of this." And I said, "So it's great training for me to be on City Council, where, you know, sometimes you're just not on the right team." And so I do my best to try to make sure that I treat everyone as another human being with ideas that sometimes I disagree with, but sometimes I agree with. And so I really think the more we can, my little pitch right here is going to be that when you're looking for who you're going to vote for for different positions, try to find someone for whom their intention is to benefit the city. Because when you get someone whose intention is to benefit themselves, to, I started being asked to run for council back in the 90s, and I said, "I don't have enough of a vested interest, besides I like my life." And so I said, "But I don't have business interests that are going to be important. I don't have career aspirations in politics, so it's just really, why would I even want to do that?" And now I wish I had run back in the 90s. I think it would have been a lot easier than it has been the last three years, but anyway. So we've had a variety of crises that have come up, and the oil spill was just the most recent one. We got to the point where we would all look at each other, we'd say, "Don't say what can happen next," because it's like things that you never anticipated would come upon us. And so, but we did get good news yesterday, that the oil spill was only about 25,000 barrels. It wasn't the huge number that we had thought it was going to be in the first place. And I was very interested, because I was down at Big Corona several times, talking with the workers down there and seeing what they were doing, and was just so impressed. They were turning over every piece of seaweed that had washed up on our beaches to find the clumps of oil, and there were, we got to the point, I can't remember the number, but we got to the point where we had a lot of these people working in Newport Beach. And, you know, I started thinking about all the people that say, "Oh, we hate government. You know, we don't need government." And I was thinking, "Boy, I sure am glad we've got the state to come in here and do this, because it would have taken us a very long time to train all the volunteers and get everybody ready to go," and they had the system in place. So of course there are ways to improve things, but, you know, we don't have a Fish and Wildlife Department in Orange County, I found out, even though all the other counties in California do. So, you know, there are things you find out along the way that maybe can be done differently, but at the same time, we really have to be grateful that they did what they did and took care of it, and I think most of our businesses survived fine, and, you know, it's hard to complain about Newport Beach. I will get into a couple of the issues that people do complain about. That was the one, my first year that hit, was I volunteered to be on the Homeless Task Force, because I felt like that was one of the most important things in our city that had to be addressed. So what we did was, we spent about a year on the Homeless Task Force, just having people come to our meetings and throw rotten tomatoes at us. It was unbelievable. We had a good committee. We built a committee of people who have worked in homelessness and who really understand it, and we didn't have time to talk to them, because there were so many just frustrated citizens that wanted to come down, because those were open Brown Act committees. We couldn't get anything done. We finally, after about a year of listening and really digesting what everyone was saying, other than the lady that said we had to put them on a bus and take them all to the desert. We didn't listen too much to her, but, you know, but that was one of the sentiments. But after that, we formed an ad hoc committee, so that we could meet with these experts in homelessness and get together and just have real dialogue and conversations, and out of that has come a lot of action. I know we still have homelessness. We were walking in today, and one of the homeless men that hangs out here at the library was talking with us about what we needed to do, and that's not going to change. We still, I can't see that we're ever going to have no homelessness, but let me tell you, we have made huge strides in that area. We did open our collaborative shelter with Costa Mesa, and we are utilizing that. The pandemic was a little bit hard, because we weren't quite, we didn't pack them in quite as much as we would normally, and so, but it's been full to capacity, and we've really been getting, we've had a lot of success stories, where people are reunited with their families, where people are gotten into drug programs and really are turning their lives around. It's hard to focus on the good stories when you see the bad ones that are constantly hitting you in the face. So we get a lot of emails all the time from people who are saying, "You're not doing anything about homelessness," and let me tell you, I've been working three years on homelessness, and so there is a lot going on. We have, the council has authorized a collaborative effort with Be Well Orange County, which is the mental health arm of the county health system, and we will be having a van that is staffed by caseworkers, people who have experience in mental health, whether it's drug addiction, or alcohol abuse, or just schizophrenia, or other mental health issues. And these caseworkers will be called out into the community whenever there is an issue that is obviously mental health-related, instead of calling the police department. Now, a lot of times, when a uniformed officer shows up, you find that those people just shut down, they won't talk to them, they won't deal with them. But when you've got mental health experts who are going out, we think it's going to save our police department a lot of money and time. I was at a training session where they were doing the SWAT team training not too long ago, and the scenario, somebody had donated their house that was going to be torn down to the police department to use as a training exercise, and I bet there were close to 35 officers there. And the scenario was that the father inside the house was drunk and was holding his family hostage, and it was all about how they were going to get them out safely and work with the man. Well, I was thinking the whole time about our mental health efforts, and I had that same scenario next door to me one time, many, many years ago. And, you know, the police came, they surrounded two blocks around the whole area, we had the SWAT team getting people out of their homes, and I was thinking about our efforts and what a difference it will be when we have mental health experts that go and talk to that person and can work with him, so, or her, or whatever. And it's not just our homeless, it's also for other people in our community, our seniors who have mental health issues, our teenagers who have mental health issues. There's a lot of mental health crisis in our community these days, and so I feel really good about that. Grace just took that ball and ran with it, and we had a community member that donated us the money to get our van. Are we still waiting for it to arrive on the cargo ship? Yes, but that should be starting early in the new year, so we're really excited about that. The biggest issue that has faced us and the most challenging has been not just homelessness, but housing in general, because the state has taken, I tried to not demonize the other party, or, you know, other politicians, or things like that, and so don't take this as me just, you know, saying all those Democrats in Sacramento are wrong, but they really have taken an adversarial relationship with the cities, where they're telling us that we have a housing crisis and that we need, in Newport Beach's case, they divided it up statewide, and in Newport Beach's case, they told us we had to plan for the development of 4,834 new units, and half of those had to be affordable. So we've obviously already approved enough to meet half of that with our market rate housing. We don't have a problem with market rate housing, but they haven't really differentiated between affordable housing and market rate housing. And so we are in, you know, it's a mixed blessing, because we've got a city that is not, it's not derelict, it's not, doesn't have rundown properties. We have a city that, we take care of our properties. Everything is so valuable that people are constantly upgrading and making sure that it's nice. Well, that's been a big disadvantage to us when it comes to finding places to build affordable housing, because, you know, a lot of cities have motels that, or shopping centers that are not doing well, that they can turn into affordable housing. We are really at a disadvantage in that regard. So we've authorized two permanent supportive housing projects, and we've picked developers that are looking at that, but they're having trouble finding properties. Have they found properties that I don't know about yet? Okay. So that's our big thing. Now, most of you have probably read that we have a $31 or $2 million surplus, $31 million surplus in Newport this year. It's not just this year, it's really a surplus over the last three years, and because everything changed, you know, we cut way back on a lot of our expenses, because we didn't know what the pandemic was going to bring. So now we have this surplus, and I'm hoping that we're not just going to be like drunken sailors and spend it, but I'm hoping that it can go to help us with this affordable housing need, and also help on the homeless situation, because, you know, that's the one, I keep telling Grace and my council colleagues, that the things people care about in our community are the homeless and traffic. And I've made no progress on traffic, I just have to tell you. I started out wanting a Traffic Affairs Commission from made up of city people that get together and that different ideas and help us to, you know, decide how we can improve this intersection or that intersection, or how we can make traffic flow better, or where we need to stop sign, or where we don't. And I just haven't, we've got a traffic engineer, Tony Brine, and I work with him a lot. Our city staff is amazing, and anybody that tells you differently is wrong. They're not out there to ruin our lives, they're not out there to push every development project through. They are there to try and help make sure that we follow all the rules, that we don't deprive anyone of their rights to develop their property, but at the same time, we take into account our, you know, our quality of life. And that's the other thing. When you're voting, make sure that the person you're voting for is committed to ensuring our quality of life. If they're just committed to ensuring their quality of life, it's not going to work out well for us. And so it's sometimes hard to tell, because a lot of people say the right thing, you know, and it sounds like everybody wants the same thing we do. There are a lot of community members here today that I've been working with for 50 years, and I know a lot of us are on the same page. We don't want to take anything away from anybody that wants to develop their property, but we also don't want to make life unbearable in Newport Beach. It's like, this is the goose that laid the golden egg, and we don't want to destroy it in the process. So it's really important that we look for people that love Newport Beach as much as most of us do. I mean, most of you I have seen around town for 50 or more years, and so I think there is a core group, but we get sidelined into these little fights on different issues. The directly elected mayor issue is one that's going to come up, and, you know, I always say, "I hate the issues that come up that just further polarize us," because it just doesn't help. It's important, and I also said, when I first looked at that, I said, "Okay, I'm taking personalities out of this, and I'm going to look at this on the basis of what does this mean for our city." And so I really was pretty much able to do that and look at the pros and the cons, and that's what I'd like to ask each of you to do, is look at the pros and the cons on that and figure out whether it's really going to give us the result that we want in having a more accountable council and mayor and city government, because that's what we really need to know about for sure. So I wanted to tell you about some of the efforts in Sacramento, that, you know, the Attorney General yesterday came out with a statement that they were forming a strike force to force the cities in California to build the, and it said in there, "to build the housing." The important distinction here is, cities don't build housing. Builders and developers build housing. All we do is zone and try to plan for eventual housing and commercial, and we always look for a balance. We've done such a great job in Newport Beach of having balance, where we really do, and it really bothers me when people sometimes try to pit the business community against the citizens, because we all know, we want a strong, vibrant business community. We want, we don't want empty stores down on the highway. We want people that are doing well, and I learned a lesson from the smart and final leaving Corona del Mar, because I didn't shop there as much as I could have. And then everybody was, I mean, my email, my inbox was just filled with people saying, "We can't do without a market here. What are we going to do?" Well, so finally, Mother's Market looks like it's going to open, maybe in December, we're hoping. But the thing I learned from that is, you always talk about supporting local businesses, but do we actually do it as much as we should? Because those people, they're there for us, and we don't want them to have to depend on people from out of town, so that they don't care about the citizens, and it's the same thing for the businesses. I always encourage them to look, and we've got some business owners here, we've got the owners of Cappy's Cafe over here, Tim and Cheryl, and they have just been great community partners, and they are involved. And, you know, Jim Walker from the Bungalow is another one. He does so much for our city, and he gives so much, and we've got a lot of business owners that do that, and we really need to make sure that we support the businesses who care about us, who want our community to be alive and vital, and so I wanted to tell you about the, on the housing, it's not just 4,000 units that we have to build, because we're now down to about 2,500 affordable, moderately affordable, and one other category, there's three affordable categories. We have to, we have to plan for those to be developed. Well, it's very easy for us to do market rate, but getting affordable units is very difficult. And Nancy Scarborough is here. Nancy is going to be a City Council candidate in about three years now, and she has dug into this housing element and really understands it, and according to the calculations, and our city Community Development Department has not disputed this, that in order to get to those 2,500 affordable, you're, at the rate we're going, you're going to have to approve about 20,000 units, because we don't have an inclusionary policy in Newport Beach. They had one at one time, and they didn't need it, so they let it lapse. And what an inclusionary policy is, it means that when you're developing a project, you're supposed to have 5, 10, 15, 20 percentage of affordable housing units. They get a density bonus, they get to build a little bit more for that, and so because we don't have one, we've been approving projects that have maybe five units out of 34, and so we're not really attacking it from that angle, because our council doesn't like the idea of telling people what to do. Well, none of us do. But in this case, the housing presentation that our Community Development Director brought to us at the last study session was very interesting, because we sent our submission to Housing and Community Development in Sacramento, and they said, "No, we don't like your submission," as they have said no to all the cities who have submitted theirs. And it's very interesting, because he brought it to us, and he said, "Okay, they don't like, we said we could do 1,000 accessory dwelling units," so they're narrowing that down to like 150 or something like that, and every time you take something out of one category, you have to put it in another. So what happens is, they told us all the things we couldn't do, and our Community Development Department, our planners, are doing an exceptional job. They are trying everything. The Banning Ranch, they told us we couldn't include Banning Ranch, but their Coastal Commission is the one who told us we couldn't put the developments at the 1,400 units at Banning Ranch that was on our city plan. They told us they weren't sure about Coyote Canyon near the old dump site, but there is land around there that's solid land, not built on the dump site. So they were not sure about a lot of the things we had in this element, but they, I just wish they'd come down here and see, because it's not like we're trying to not find places to be developed. It's like, our Housing Element Update Committee, Debbie Stevens was on that, and Larry Tucker, I don't think you're here today, but Larry chaired that, they looked at every parcel in Newport Beach. They sent letters to owners saying, "I know you're zoned commercial, but would you think about doing a residential project in the future?" They got very few responses. Same thing with ADUs. We know there's a lot of conversation out there, where people want to build a granny unit maybe over their garage in Newport Heights, and it won't seriously impact the quality of life, but people are frustrated, because it's so hard to do. There are requirements that you bring it up to code. Well, if you're looking for an affordable housing property, you know, it's probably not going to be top-notch. You know, you're trying to find something that maybe a student could live in, or a grandmother or something, and so one side doesn't seem to know what the other side is doing. And one of our successes, I did want to tell you about one of our successes, because I've also been working on short-term rental units the entire time I've been on council, and so we put a committee together, made up of Jeff Herdman and Diane Dixon and I, and we were getting so many complaints about party houses, and people that just rent, you know, overnight and have bridal. One lady told us about, she had three events in the place next door in one week, where they had two bridal showers and a birthday party, and so people were sending us emails about this, and so we put together our ad hoc committee, and we worked with everyone. We worked with the realtors, we worked with the citizens, we worked with the property owners. We got to the point where we finally got a couple of ordinances that we got through that we got through council by the skin of our teeth. Thank heavens Duffy Duffield voted with us. And, um, so we got these ordinance passed. Then we had to go to coastal commission. Well, in Newport Beach, going to coastal commission is just considered the worst because we've had an adversarial relationship with them for so long because they try to tell us what to do, which we don't deal well with in Newport Beach. And, um, so, we knew we had to take this to coastal commission because a great many of our short-term rentals are in the coastal zone. So, we got it through council. We've been waiting to get to coastal. Last month, we finally got to coastal. And, um, Di- it was a Zoom meeting, and Diane Dixon and I were on the call along with city staff and our planners. And we got to make a presentation, and we got to talk about why this was necessary. And what we ended up with was a cap of 1,550 short-term rentals in Newport Beach. Um, and that's just in the multifamily zones, primarily because the council years ago excluded the single-family neighborhoods. So, when you see that map of where all these short-term rentals are, it's just devastating. And it's mostly, you know, along the coast and the water and that sort of thing. So, so, we got, um, a special ordinance done for Newport Island because Newport Island has a small bridge on and off, and, uh, they're very close together with no parking, and they were suffi- suffering horribly. So, when we got to the coastal commission, the coastal commission listened to us. They were very respectful. And when they started talking, they were very supportive of Newport Beach. They thought that we were being overly generous with 1,550, and they started talking about RINA and housing needs. When we told them that, um, the permanent residents on the Peninsula, it, the percentage has gone down by 12% in the last few years, on the last census. Corona del Mar has gone down by 6%. And when they heard that, they really, they, several of them quoted that when they were talking about it. And they understand that you're really impacting the ability to have affordable housing units in your community if everything is rented up to overnight visitors. So, we've got an interesting history in Newport Beach where we have, you know, forever, we've had Balboa Island that, you know, back in, in, when I was young, it rented out on the summer, during the summer three months, you could get the same amount of rent per week for those places that you could get for a month in the winter, and they did nine-month rentals in the winter. Well, that has changed with the advent of the, um, network, you know, and Airbnb and all of that. I mean, we have so many people that want to come down, and they were using us as event centers. They were using us as a place to have a party that had very little control. So, we have really focused on code enforcement, calling the police for things. It's just, it's not the best way to approach things. So, we've ramped up our code enforcement. We're really looking at that as the way, the way of the, the future. And we've had some good success. I think a lot of those operators have decided to be better neighbors just because they saw we were looking at this. We were working on this. We were trying to find a solution. Whereas, you know, it's not that we've really been penalizing them or anything like that. It's that they're recognizing that their behavior was contributing to the city trying to kind of step, stamp down on them. So, I think we've, it's gotten better just by that. We have another issue that has come up recently, and it's, it's something that I, Keith, I'm sure you probably dealt with this when you were in council, was the group homes. And that, you know, we sort of thought we had that handled. We had a settlement agreement. Some of the group home sober living facilities and mental health facilities, um, some of them became better citizens after we had the, the issues and the lawsuit and everything with them. Um, but it has geared back up. And right now, we're having people not even apply, they don't all have to have permits if they're, they have to have a conditional use permit and a business license, but they don't all need a permit if they're six and under. So, we're having a, a lot of problems with places that are six and under. They're supposed to be regulated by the state. Well, when we call, uh, the Department of Health and Human Services at the state, they're not just Johnny on the spot getting down here to, um, solve our problems, and they're not investigating them the way we would like to have them investigated. And our neighbors are suffering horribly from those. So, with the recent, um, shooting that happened up in Santa Ana Heights, we've really got even, I mean, we've been serious. I, poor Laura Curran, I have been just referring her to higher electeds for the last three years because I kept being told we can't do anything at the city level about this. And so, with that, when that happened, that neighborhood got mobilized. And I think you all know, everybody here, I'm sure knows, that that's how you get anything done. And you have to have the citizens that really rise up and say, "No, this problem, i- it's not working, and you need to do something about it." And our problem was that we didn't really know what we could do about it. So, we had a meeting here a couple of months ago where we got Assemblywoman Cotty Petri Norris, we got State Senator Dave Minn, we got Supervisor Katrina Foley, and, um, Todd Spitzer to come. And we had a lot of citizens here, and we really, and, and you know, I always talk about, like, some meetings are tied up with a pretty pink bow, and you've got the PowerPoint presentation, and it all looks like, oh, they really know what they're talking about. Well, this was not one of those meetings. This was a messy meeting, and I loved it because people were really talking about the situation and what the circumstances were and how this isn't working and that's not working. And, you know, somebody is saying their ordinance is better than our ordinance, and we're thinking we've got everything done on our ordinance that we can do. And it was a great meeting. And all of those electeds that were here promised us that they would, and they are taking it seriously, and they're working with us. Tara Finnegan, who's here, is the person, the point person, um, at the city who is really working on that and trying so hard to pull all the disparate groups together. And we had a meeting, a Zoom meeting yesterday with city attorney and other city attorneys and electeds, and we actually are looking at everything we can possibly do there. And Cotty has proposed several pieces of legislation. She got one of them passed. She's bringing another one back that she got into committee, but it didn't go any further last year. So, she is trying to make sure that we get the teeth that we need in Sacramento to actually address these problems. Because, and, and what Costa Mesa has done, they've tackled it from the approach of, "These people are not getting the best service. These people are not having their health needs met." And the judge, who was not very friendly to us 10 years ago, is now being quite friendly and educated and really trying to solve these problems. So, it, you know, it's progress. And, and I, I was laughing at our Corona del Mar Residents Association the other day because I said, "I have a new Indian name. It's 'She Who Speaks to Democrats.'" Because, because, you know, they're, if they're elected, I'm going to talk to them, and I want them to help us, and I don't care what party they come from. I don't care what their affiliation is. I want problems solved. And that's what I think we're seeing, that we, we really are getting people who are engaged and trying to solve problems. And I've been very impressed with so many people that I've met in, uh, these elected positions. And even when I don't disagree, when I don't agree with my colleagues, um, I like them as people, and I try to always remember that, that, you know, when I look at them just as, as people and try to find the common ground where we can come together to solve problems, it really works best for, for all of us. So, anyway, that's kind of what I've been doing for the last three years. And I thought there might be some questions that you guys would, would like to have answered. Yes, David?
Joy, a quick update on the, the, uh, plan, the one-way, the five-way street?
You know, it's so interesting because I've lived in Corona del Mar for 60 years. And, um, I don't know how to say this exactly, but, you know, I was often the leader of different community, um, groups that got together and stormed City Hall on this. Keith can attest to that. I was always speaking to City Hall about one thing or another. But the one-way streets, we did a survey and found out that about two-thirds of the people are in favor of one-way streets. And yet, I can't get a group of people that are really going to push this forward. And at the council level, we asked that there be petitions given to us that, um, you know, indicate about 69 to 70% of the public like an idea, especially for traffic, speed bumps, things like that. And, um, this committee, like, they're all really gung-ho, but nobody's, we've got the petition. We need people that are going to go into their block and ta- and I can't do it. That's the, the problem here is that I can't do it because I've got to be neutral. I've got to see what the community says. So, if Debbie, would you stand up? Debbie Stevens is president of the Corona del Mar Residents Association. And they have the petition. They've got it on their website. They are looking for community, and you don't have to do the whole thing. Just do your block or your street or whatever, and then bring it to the council. And I, I made sort of a joke when we were talking about the directly elected mayor, uh, issue the other day because I said, "Even to put a speed bump in front of people's house, you need 70% of the public." And here, we're doing a charter amendment that had, was decided by kind of like one person on one side of the issue. So, anyway, but that's how things have traditionally worked in Newport Beach. We need the community to tell us what they want. And the streets have really gotten, they're, they're just impassable most of the time. So, um, anyway, so I'm hoping that, you know, the community actually follows through on that. Talk to Debbie if anybody has any questions about that. Yeah, anybody else?
I'll just say, maybe 60 seconds on commercial trash.
That was frustrating. I say, any council meeting I leave and they don't make me cry is a good meeting. That meeting, they made me cry. You know, we've got, in our commercial districts, we have, I believe it's seven or more trash haulers that negotiate with each individual business. And on, especially in Corona del Mar where we've got the alley backing up to residences. And, um, so, we came up with the idea, the city staff actually had the idea a long time ago that we allow each of our commercial districts to negotiate with the trash haulers and come up with a contract just for, like, Corona del Mar, Balboa Island, Mariners Mile, Peninsula, um, and that they could do the contract and get one trash hauler who gave the businesses the very best deal that they could give them, but at the same time, had a route every day that they start at one end of town and go all the way down, and they're not backing up and beeping, and one trash hauler is not trying to get around the other trash hauler. And, um, my, my council decided that they believe in free enterprise and that this was, uh, impeding on free enterprise. And so, I asked them if all of us wanted to negotiate with our own trash hauler, if that would be acceptable, but they didn't. Anyway, I'm hoping that they come along. We also are trying to work with our business in, in certain areas, and it might even be better if we could get our businesses, our chambers of commerce and our, um, different business groups to say, "Okay, let's at least go out and ask the haulers to give us a bid on the whole area." We have to start the process five years ahead of time to do it at the city level, but they don't. And so, I'm talking with, you know, Chamber of Commerce people and other business people about if that's something that they would like to do to benefit their businesses, but also just to benefit the neighborhood, then maybe, um, you know, maybe we can take a different route to get to that and, and make all of our neighborhoods a little quieter and a little safer. We, we're very con- well, I do need to talk about trash. Oh, my gosh, we have a new contract. We have new mandates from the state. And it's, we've been kind of warning everybody that it's coming, but it's coming soon now. It's coming early in 2022 where we have to have an organics recycling program. Now, other cities have had it for 20 years. So, I don't feel like we're really being put upon that we finally have to do it here in Newport Beach. But it's very cumbersome for us because we've got narrow streets. You know, the more trash, um, trucks that you've got navigating your small streets, it's really problematic. And that was what I tried to impress upon them before was, you know, if we can cut down on some of those trash trucks, we're already going to have to have a third pickup in our neighborhoods, and it's going to be an organic waste container where we put our food scraps and our green trimmings from our bushes and things like that. And it's coming, we've been working on, that committee, we've been working on for three years too. So, it's, um, it probably is going to be CRNR. We looked at all the trash companies. We didn't discriminate and say, "Oh, they're our current hauler. We're going to go with them." We, we've had consultants.[1479.44] We've had consultants, we've had monthly meetings. It's going to be a bit of a learning curve because we're going to have to have like a pail or something in our, maybe a composter. I saw a little $99 composter that you can have in your house. And we're going to have to separate our food and our organic waste material from our recycling and from our just normal waste. We're also going to have to break down all of our boxes and put them in our recycling containers. Now, I know in my alley, everybody just stacks the boxes out next to the trash can, and we've been, it's been great. I've lived here long enough that I know when we had our own trash haulers in Newport Beach, they were city employees, and we loved our trash haulers. And, you know, we all had to be convinced that we were willing to privatize this, and we went along with it. And I think they've given us as much slack as they can for as long as they can. But it's finally gotten to the point that we're all going to, it's amazing, like 60% of our city has not had recycling containers all this time. And I know a lot of us have been doing it forever, but it's going to become mandatory, and it's going to have to be done, and there will be fines, and there will be extra trash cans passed out. We'll all need the organic can. And so it's going to be some change, and you know how we all love change. So it's going to be, you know, I know it's going to be painful, but I asked them if they had to do this during an election year when I'm running for reelection, but they didn't seem to be bothered by that. So anyway, so there will be some changes coming, but our city is running so beautifully. We've got such, you know, and please don't believe when you hear that the city staff is trying to undermine all of us and destroy our city, just don't believe it because they work their butts off, and they work really hard for us. So thank you. That's all I have to say for today. There is one other thing. We've got, we've got the Stop SB9 effort that is an initiative that is going throughout the state, and it's the Stop the Sacramento Land Grab. If you go to stopsb9oc.com, you will find the petition. It is an initiative that was started by Bill Brand, who's the mayor of Hermosa Beach, and he got the effort together and went through all the attorneys and got this initiative that restores local control. And what it basically says is each community should be in charge of determining their own destiny when it comes to local control. And so Susan Skinner is one of the people that is working hard to gather these signatures. We're going to have 108, it just came out of the Attorney General's office this week. I believe we have 180 days to get the number of signatures statewide, and there's a lot. I've been meeting every week with Livable California, which is a group of electeds from throughout the state, and there are people all over the state that are upset about this, not just Newport Beach. And thank heavens, because if it was just Newport Beach, they wouldn't really care. You know, they think we're just entitled and that we don't want to do anything. But this is people from all over the state, from all sorts of economic levels that are saying, "No, you're destroying our state with these laws, and we need to bring back control to our local officials." Margie?
What was the site name?
Stopsb9oc dot, was it org? Yes. And Susan Skinner 949 at gmail dot com. So stopsb9oc dot com and Susan Skinner 949 at gmail dot com. There's going to be a lot of people working on this. It's not just Susan, and it's not a partisan issue by any means. It's, we're all unified on this. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Joy. That was a wealth of information here. Sorry, we didn't have a little more time for Q and A. Maybe Joy will stick around for a few more minutes and if you have any questions. I will say that there's a common theme running through what she was talking about, how state is trying to control us at the city level, whether it's housing through the RINA assessments, whether it's group homes where we have to go to the state to be able to regulate them, whether it's trash pickup now with this organics program, that these are all state mandates that are being pushed down on the cities, and we have to react to them because we can't just ignore them or else they start fining us. So it is challenging. I was a city council person myself, and I could actually sympathize with a few things you said. I was the mayor in 2007 when we attacked the groom, the group home problem here in town, and, you know, there was a lot of angry people that filled that council chamber, and, you know, we were listening and we did, you know, the best we could. But, you know, things seem to be cyclical, and the cycles turn back now, and now this council will have to deal with it. So that was, like you said, a great presentation. We have a few other events coming up. Quickly, I'll just mention them. If you're interested in networking, we have a networking luncheon at the BCYC on November 17th. Our next chamber mixer, which we don't have the location yet, I was trying to get the winery, but I don't know that that's going to work out, so, but we'll have another great place, is on November 18th. And then the next night, if you didn't get enough of the chamber, November 19th is our Newport Chamber Honors Event. We're going to be honoring the Citizen of the Year, Joe Stapleton, from 2020. He didn't get his party last year, so we're going to include him with Walt Howald, who's the 2021 Citizen of the Year. Yeah, Walt Howald. And that's going to be at the Balboa Bay Resort on November 19th. Our next Wake Up Newport meeting will be here, last one of the year, December 2nd. Our speaker is going to be the President of Hoag Hospital, Robert Briefway. So I'm sure he'll have a lot to talk about, a lot of stories about, you know, the last couple of years and how they've dealt with the coronavirus pandemic, and also their huge expansion. I don't know if you noticed that they, I mean, Hoag is not just a Newport Beach hospital anymore. They're countywide with their clinics. They announced a new hospital that they're opening in Irvine, and they already have the orthopedic hospital over there. So they're, they're really, you know, except for UCI, oh, I can, I don't have to mention UCI because Alberto had to leave early. UCI, though, is also building another hospital right across the street at Campus and Jamboree. So all the hospitals, City of Hope, building their new hospital in Irvine. So we're going to get the best of the best medical care here, certainly in Orange County, and Robert's going to be talking about what Hoag's doing. We will be having a new mayor, even though we're not electing the mayor yet. The council will select a new mayor on December 14th. That's the council meeting day. And so as tradition has it, we hold the mayor's reception at the Back Bay Bistro afterwards. So if you're so inclined to come and welcome the new mayor and Mayor Pro Tem, no new council members this year. Next year, we'll have three new council members though because there's three open seats.
About four?
Well, yeah, I'm assuming not four. Joy's going to be reelected, and we're going to have three new council members. I'm making a prediction right now. Okay? Yeah. And then the last event I'll just mention, I mentioned it earlier, just a reminder, the Christmas Boat Parade is December 15th. We're going to have opening night fireworks, and it'll go through the 19th and closing night fireworks on that Sunday. So please, if you have a boat, you know, come out on the water, or actually, if you have a boat, you should sign up for the boat parade. Get in it. Don't just be a bystander, be a participant. But if you don't do that, you know, get out on the water or just walk down to the waterfront and you can watch it. I mean, the parade touches almost every part of the waterfront here in the harbor. It's a great event, and we're happy to bring it back this year. Unfortunately, you know, last year was a little difficult, but this year we're excited about it. So that's all I have. If you're not a member of the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce, you should be, and so you can see me afterwards. And all these events are on our website, so you can go there at newportbeach.com and find them there. Thanks for coming. Have a great day.